Good evening and welcome to the June 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. At this time, we'd like to ask you to please stand. Ms. Smith will lead us in our pledge, followed then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have an approval of the agenda for tonight.
I do have one change, Chair. We need to remove pleas under action items. C, this is approval of tenure recommendations because we have not received the data from the state that we need.
Okay.
With that stipulation, so moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I'm sorry, Ms. Rineer. Excuse me, that is you in the chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Our agenda is approved. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, we do have an announcement to make and want to let you know about that, and that is the enhanced snack program. And I'm going to ask Ms. Shealy to please come to the podium.
The enhanced snack program is a program that would take place of what we currently have for the snack program that's ran through the National School Lunch Program for ESP. This program would be ran through the Department of Human Services instead. This will allow us to offer a wider variety of items for our students than just the normal two items that we are currently able to offer.
So we wanted to let you know about that. That would be for ESP and for those schools that qualify, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't understand, is it like only during ESP or people that need?
No, this would be the snack program with ESP.
Only ESP. Okay, thank you.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. I do want to ask Greg Lyles to come and give updates. We have had some tremendous camps this summer, and I really appreciate the camps that have been held for our children. I know that some of you have been able to see those. A couple of them were, the celebrations were held on the same day, so that was interesting. But I thought it would be a good time to talk about the camps that have been held. And also, we have one more, I believe, to go this summer. So Greg?
Thank you. Let me give this. Thank you. As Dr. Gilbert indicated, we have had some exciting camps this summer. I want to share some of those with you. But in planning these camps, it is our goal to offer some exciting learning opportunities for our children, as well as activities related to life skills, leadership, team building, and career choices. And we started the summer with Camp Prism, and we've had this camp for a number of years. It started several years back with partnership with MTSU, with Mitchell Nielsen and Dr. Rebecca Callahan from MTSU. This year, we were able to expand that camp. We had thirty, we had two sessions, and we had thirty students in each session. So we were able to serve a total of sixty kids during that camp, during the two-week period. And some of the activities we were able to do, we, the kids had hands-on activities in math at, on the MTSU campus, as well as at the Mitchell Nielsen campus. They were able to eat lunch a couple of days on the campus. They had a visit here to City Hall with the mayor. We were able to tour the MTSU airport. And while here at City Hall, they were able to participate or look at the city planning department and the traffic cameras, computers. Channel 3 also did a session with them while here at City Hall. So some photos from some of the active, so those are your future city leaders in Murfreesboro City Schools. Those activity, one of the activities that Channel 3 did with them here, they were able to print their own T-shirts at Screen Art here in town. That was one of their walking field trips from the MTSU, from the Mitchell Nielsen campus. That's one group of thirty kids that we served. We had a celebration of learning, culminating activity at the end, had an outstanding speaker for our students, and she is a native of Murfreesboro, and did a great job encouraging and motivating our students. Then we had our girls' camp. This is the third year for that camp. Our outreach coordinators who are on the, have, they're on a twelve, eleven-month schedule, so they have two weeks after the teachers are gone. One week, we give them to end the school year. The next week, we do the girls' camp. We moved it from Bradley to Hobgood this year. We served twenty-seven young ladies, and we had some partnerships throughout the district, as well as the community that helped make this camp a success, thanks to our coordinated school health department, Stones River Mall, our food and nutrition department with Chef Jack, Murfreesboro Tennis Association, the list goes on and on. Girls were privileged to be able to go to Farmer's Market. This was the first day. Chef Jack had planned this trip with them, along with coordinated school health. They were able to purchase the foods that they were going to be using in their celebration at the end of the week. We end the week with the fancy tea that the girls have. They dress up, they wear their hats, and this year, they prepared the refreshments for the camp. They went, had a tennis session with the Murfreesboro Tennis Association at the tennis courts, Old Fort Park. They were able to do a visual display with the help of Dillard's, I believe, at the mall, so that was part of that. There's the, that's the final display that they were doing, visual merchandising. And they were privileged to be able to make their own pizzas at Sabaro Pizzas at the mall. The mall gave each of the young ladies a chef's hat, and that's the owner of Sabaro's. We're fortunate, he was in town from Chicago, because he owns a Sabaro's in Nashville and was doing Music Fest, and so he was here visiting his store in Murfreesboro. So he was excited to have us there. And the food, the refreshments that the young ladies prepared for their tea on Friday, as Dr. Gilbert indicated, we had two celebrations going on at the same time. Camp Prism and, as well as the gyms camp culminating on the same day, at the same time. And I must say that Ms. Melanie Price, I think for the second year, has done etiquette with our young ladies, one of the sessions that they do during the camp. So we had help from lots of folks in making that camp a success. The girls made their own risque sardis compliments of Publix Food Store. They, as I said, we visited the Farmer's Market, they did tennis, let me think, what else? Was some of the, it was quite a number of activities that week with the girls. Then we, Club Marvel, of course, we do all year, of course. Those are some of the sessions that you see there that we had in the fall. We started off in October with concrete management, and then we had a session with mathematics department. They got to see the inside workings of the athletic department. Liberal Arts did a program with them as well. This is one Saturday a month that the students commit to for Club Marvel. We picked them up at three different locations around town, and we bring them back. And then part of Club Marvel spilled over into the summer. We had an MTSU Farm Day. They got to go out and actually see the cows and learn how they were milked and that whole process, and visit the MTSU farm. The environmental education department did a day with them at Discovery Center, and then we also visited on our last program Tennessee Center for Applied Technology. That's one of the sessions at the Discovery Center, Environmental Ed. They were there dissecting owl pellets. So, that's the farm. That's one of the earlier programs Concrete Management did with them. They actually learned how to lay brick, and that was the program, the tour we did of the athletic department. Liberal Arts did an archaeological program with them as well, hands-on math, as I said earlier. We have a boys' camp that's coming up in July. It's the second week after our eleven-month employees come back. It's also at Hobgood. We're partnering with Olive Branch Church to assist us with that camp. Some of the activities planned, we're going to take them on a fishing trip. We're going to introduce them to golfing with the new youth golf course here on Old Fort Parkway. Auto mechanics, our, let's see, a group from Nashville, the NES Toastmasters is going to do a session with them on how to speak and how to present themselves. We'll do a session on Dress for Success, and then we'll end the camp with a cookout on Friday. So that's just a highlight of some of the camps that we had this summer. Are there any questions?
Where is the boys' camp, did you say?
It's going to be at Hobgood as well.
At Hobgood.
Yes.
I assume that all of this comes under your umbrella of activities?
Yes, sir.
And therefore, I assume also that you're responsible for getting the sponsors?
To some extent. We have our outreach team that also helps in planning and reaching out to community partners. And then with the club, Camp Prism, we had a liaison, Ms. Mimi Thomas from MTSU. She works with Dean Fisher in the Department of Basic and Applied Sciences. She was certainly a big help in helping us plan a lot of the activities for Camp Prism. So it's not just my department. We kind of coordinated, but we have lots of help.
Well, you-
Lots of different people, lots of different community partners.
You are to be commended for continuing an educational program for young people throughout the summer.
It was an exciting summer, and I think the kids really had a ball.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Phillips?
I want to echo what Mr. Campbell had to say. Thank you, Mr. Lyles, for your leadership, the leadership of your team. I don't know another community that has the community partnerships that we do. We are so fortunate in our community partnerships. And you know, things like this, this, these enrichment activities, I think in many ways, they can impact a child as just as much as what goes on in our classroom during their school year. You know, these things are life-changing, life-skill events, so thank you so much for that. And, oh, yeah, I'd be glad to come back and wear another hat for the girls' camp next year.
That'll work. Next year will be our fourth year for the girls' camp.
I know. I was there, it was awesome.
And this year was really, out of the three that we've done, I think this was probably the most impressive.
Right. I'll be interested to see how your boys' camp goes.
I'm sorry.
I'll be interested to see how your boys' camp goes out there today.
Thank you.
First time, good luck.
Yes, first time. We've done Boys to Men during the school year. This past year, because of scheduling conflicts, and we just didn't do it. I'd walk in the school, and some of the schools that we've done it in the past, Hobgood and Bradley, the boys would say, "Oh, Mr. Lyles, we're doing Boys to Men." So I thought, hmm, let's just do it at the end of the year. We'll do a week-long camp, and so-
Can Murph come visit?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Dr. Gilbert?
Next on the agenda, we have our dates, and I thought that I would share these with you and also with the public. Principals are going to be returning July the fourteenth, so very soon. July the twenty-first, then, our assistant principals return, and we will be meeting with principals and assistant principals on the Thursday following that all day. Teachers come back in on the twenty-ninth, and then the sixth will be the students' first day back, which will be a half-day. And then the seventh, we're in full swing, so time is passing rapidly, to say the least. It's unbelievable. Amazing. It's busier in the summer than I think that it is during the school year. And those are your communications.
Okay. All right. Consent items? Have a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Phillips? Mr. Barrett, thank you. Any discussion?
I think there are some revisions that were, I felt comfortable that there's, they could not have been included already. Were they all included and put on?
No, you're correct. There are some, couples of minor revisions. You and Ms. Rineer probably have a couple of minor revisions that will be reflected in that.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the consent item? We need that?
Can I second it?
It's already been up.
We just need to vote. Should we modify that to include the revisions?
And I think you do have the major revision, I think, that you have on your desk that Ms. Smith had, and I think with Ms. Rineer, it was a matter of the word without instead of with.
Okay.
So I think that you all should be very comfortable with-
Okay.
-with those revisions.
All right. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Action items?
Okay, the first policy that you have before you under action items for first reading is Board Policy SS-12 regarding student fees and fines. This is a policy that is required under a state statute. The state statute requires that we have a process where we can waive school fees for students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And you'll see there in the policy, there have only been very minor changes made to this policy that was originally adopted in July of 2010. There is a definition for what the law says a school fee is, and then there's a list of the items that state law and state rules and regulations say that a school fee does not include. The one change that I've made to this policy to reflect some revisions to the state regulations are found in lines six and seven, I added the language "or for activities outside regular school hours if required for credit or grade." And that's the key to determining whether something is a school fee, is they look to see whether the activity is being done during the instructional day or after hours for a grade. And that, that's one of the bases they use. At our policy session, it was recommended that I delete any of the items that are strictly for middle and high schools. So I did delete line there. You'll see, I deleted the line that originally dealt with fees required for graduation ceremonies. I removed that, and I, there had originally been a reference in item five to marching bands, and I took out the word marching and just left band, since we do have some band programs. Then in line twenty-two, originally, there had been some language about parking or other traffic fines for abuse of parking privileges on school property. I deleted that, since that's not applicable to our elementary system. I, in line, in line twenty-five, I made some, I just made some revisions to the Tennessee rule that was referenced there. They changed the numbering of that section. On the next page, in line fifty-four, the board had requested that I remove the original language that said no later than the July meeting, since typically, the board does not meet in July. I removed that language and inserted instead, prior to the start of each school year. The board, upon recommendation of the principal and director, shall approve all known student fees for the upcoming school year. And then in lines eighty-one through eighty-three, I added some language that's reflected in the state statutes and regulations that indicate that if a student or parent disputes a debt that is owed to the school system, they may bring that to the board, may request to bring that dispute to the board. And those are the main changes. There was one question that was raised at the last meeting, in line eighty-nine and ninety. I believe Ms. Rineer asked if we had any prorated charges for used books. I don't have that answer at this time. Hopefully, I'll have it by the next policy session. But the, as the language reads now, we have, we are charging for the replacement cost of a book regardless of age.
Okay.
And this is before you on first reading.
Any questions? Ms. Rineer?
I would go ahead and recommend that we accept this policy with the provision that you'll find out whether or not we'll go to replacement costs that's prorated. I would move, to move this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Rineer. Have a second to that motion?
Second.
Dr. Brown? Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy STU-17. It regards the name on people records. Under State Statute 49-6-5106, it does require that a child's legal name, as it appears on their birth certificate, is the name that is reflected on all school records. And I've, so I really had no major changes to this policy. At our policy session, there was a question raised regarding what happens if a family does not happen to have a birth certificate, for whatever reason. And I did include in lines six through eight, a clause that I did find in some other school systems policies that appears to provide for that, that situation. And that, that line reads that if the parent does not have or cannot obtain a birth certificate, then the name used on the records of such student will be as shown on documents which are acceptable to the system as proof, proof of the date of birth. That is what I noticed was in a couple of other school systems, in particular, Rutherford County utilized the same language, and it appears that's what other school systems are doing if there's absolutely no birth certificate to rely on.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
I move that we accept this policy as written.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'll second.
Second, but, Barrett, any questions?
I do have one.
Ms. Phillips?
Mine's just a general question, Ms. Baker. Just out of curiosity, what items, what documents are acceptable to our system as proof of birth?
Sometimes, if, sometimes people may have adoption papers that they may be able to utilize that would have a legal name on them.
Okay.
Their records, if there may be some medical records that they may have, if they were, if it was a child that's in the foster care system, and there are some official records from the Department of Children's Services, they probably would accept those records. I'm not familiar with what the other school systems are using. Those are just some thoughts that I had as to what might constitute other records that we would consider acceptable. Since the principals are not in right now, I didn't have the opportunity to ask them what they've done when they've been faced with this situation, what type of documents have they relied on. I do plan on trying to obtain that information before this comes to you for a final reading, so that I can inform you.
That makes sense.
Ms. Rineer?
When I was teaching kindergarten, if a parent did not have the official birth certificate but had the mother's copy that was given at the hospital, we accepted that, and perhaps Dr. Brown might know better than any of us as far as what a parent receives.
No.
Well, I think it sounds good.
I guess you have to have a birth certificate to get a social security number? Do you?
I don't know. I can look into that.
If a parent had a social security card-
That would, that's a legal document that we did rely on.
Okay. I don't know if you got a birth certificate for that or not. Okay? All right, any other questions? Somebody made a motion to approve. Is that what Ms. Smith did?
I second.
And Ms. Barrett, second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Your next item is approval of surety bond for the finance director. Mr. Anderson, would you like to explain what that is?
Sure. The state requires that the board have the person in charge of handling the funds be bonded. A surety bond is a requirement under state statute. It's, the cost of that bond is $5,200 per year. It's something we have to do every single year on it, and we have to have your approval to do it and to spend the money to do that.
Okay. Have a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Ms. Phillips made the motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Barrett? Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Teenure recommendations?
Yes, that one we removed because we do not have the scores yet, and as we know, that the law now is that they have to be linked, so we have not received those yet.
Okay.
The approval of the supply fee limit, this, this is the recommended limit that the board would set for the cost of school supplies. You know that every year, we have a list of supplies that we ask parents to purchase, and so that's what that would be. It really serves more as a guideline to our schools when they are designing their supply list. And this, this would be like that they would list, in fact, I have the list here, crayons and markers and those kinds of things. So our recommendation for this year for you would be to set that limit at $25. We feel that that is an acceptable limit, and would, that parents would be able to purchase the materials needed for that amount. We are blessed in this community to have a lot of folks that donate supplies to us, and so that's extremely helpful, too. But we do feel like that $25 would be adequate for those supplies.
Now, that's an increase from last year?
Right, of $5.
Of $5.
Part of that is because our schools are seeing more need for things like headphones now that we have the technology. And so I did, I did send out to principals and ask them, and got several back, that they felt that the $25 would be adequate.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Can you tell us who some of our partners are?
Oh, mercy.
If you don't have a comprehensive list, I think it'd be helpful.
I will let Greg do that. Greg, could you talk about with the partners that we get the school supplies? I know that there's the stuff the bus that's going on right now, I think, at United Way.
That's from United Way.
But there's some others, too.
And a lot of our schools have relationships with churches. I know Mitchell Nielsen usually gets school supplies from the Hamilton Drive Church of Christ, and then we have New Vision Church that provides school supplies that come to mind. But in a lot of instances, a lot of the organizations contact the schools directly to donate school supplies, so.
I've just heard of so many, you know, wonderful supporters.
Right.
And, you know, there are a lot of names of people that we can't put out there because they're just people putting in school supplies, which I'm very, very grateful about. I think at our conference that we went to, Dr. Brown and Ms. Rineer and Mr. Barrett, I believe one school system, there was a program where all of their school system, all of their school supplies were covered, because they had a big program for that. But if we can get school supplies for $25, that's pretty amazing.
And I think Ms. Baker just mentioned, too.
Yeah, there's a program Parks and Rec has done in conjunction with the school system that's called Run with Scissors. It's a 5K run, and when you come to the run, you bring school supplies. And I believe that they're changing the name a little bit this year, but they're also going to have a fee now associated where all the, the fee to enter the run is going to be donated to the school system for school supplies. But that's another big event they have to, to try to get school supplies.
That's wonderful.
So we welcome school supplies.
And I believe they're changing the name a little bit this year. But they're also going to have a fee now associated where all the fee to enter the run is going to be donated to the school system for school supplies. But that's another big event they have to try to get school supplies.
That's wonderful.
So, we welcome school supplies.
All right. Need a motion to approve the fee limit?
So moved.
Dr. Brown, second?
Second.
Ms. Renier, second? Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. North City School and Rutherford County Joint School Board Meeting.
Guess that was my idea, huh? I just thought that'd be a good way for us to come together and, like we did last time, with our state legislators and express our concerns, or maybe it's the concerns they might have. And we can just have an open dialogue, you know, just to see, get them on record what they have to say and get us on record as saying, this is where we come as a Board on certain issues that are coming from the state. Sometime in the, I was thinking sometime in the fall.
Yeah, we'll need to wait till after the August election, won't we?
Well, probably.
Some won't be there that have been there. Okay? That's a good idea. I'd like to see us do that as well.
Guess we, do we need to reach out to Rutherford County then? Let them know? Oh.
Ms. Renier?
I think this is something, too, that we're perhaps going to discuss at retreat.
Okay.
So, maybe we can delay it and discuss it there and come up with an idea of time wise or whatever.
All right. An approval of budget amendments? Mr. Anderson, I guess that's you.
Sir, thank you. In your Board Packet on page forty-four is where we start the budget amendment information. And I get you to go to that area there. What this is, at the end of every fiscal year, we have to go through and do some housekeeping budget amendments to adjust our expenditure and revenue lines. When you build your budget back in the spring of the previous year, we don't know exactly what our numbers are going to work out. We don't know all the number of students are going to come in. So, we always have to do some housecleaning on budget amendments. And the ones that we are presenting with you tonight are the ones for the fiscal year we are currently ending up and therefore, ending fiscal year thirteen-fourteen. We've increased the revenue on property tax because the tax collection rate is, the amount that's been collected is higher than what we had previously. And those, you can see the line items themselves on page forty-six of your budget on Exhibit A. We increased the property taxes and the sales tax collections for a total of four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar increase. On expenditures, we've increased the expenditures in the categories of special ed, student support services for health, student support services for special education, the student support services for transportation, and community services. As I said, these are basic amendments that we need to be making at the end of each year. We used to do it at the, when the budget, I'm sorry, when the audit was done. Last year, we moved it up to have it done before June thirtieth. So, we're now continuing that trend at the request of the city and to follow all the state guidelines that we haven't done before June thirtieth because the City Council needs to approve these as well since we are part of their budget. So, we're asking you to approve the budget amendments for the ending fiscal year of thirteen-fourteen as stipulated in your Board Packet.
Are there any questions about any of these adjustments? We have a motion to approve these adjustments?
So moved.
Mr. Barrett, thank you. Second?
Second.
Dr. Brown? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, well, the next part that's in there on the budget amendments is for the fourteen-fifteen school year. And these are the federal ones. When we do your budget, in the past, we have given you the information on what we received in the current year and asked for your permission and your vote to allow Dr. Gilbert to adjust it. The Comptroller for the state is requiring that we also give expenditures in there. The document that you have for the Title Funds and the IDEA Funds, which are our federal funds and federal grants, are in here. And they are estimates at this time. These will not be finalized until September, when the new fiscal year starts in October. Basically, the federal government works on a, it's a fourteen-month cycle. They can start in July, and then you've got two months to use it up. And then, you have money that's left over that's added back in. So, we're giving you our best estimates at this point. We will have to come back to you when we get the final budget numbers from the state that we use based on these federal programs. So, all the ones you have here tonight are estimates so that we can have expenditure lines so that we fulfill the requirements that the Comptroller's Office is requiring, basically what the state's requiring to make sure our budgets are sound. So, we're asking you to approve this. This will be, this will be on the fourteen-fifteen budget that the City Council is voting on, I believe, Thursday night. Mr. Washington, we'll be voting on Thursday night. And again, we'll be bringing the final numbers back to you. But these are to get us started on what our estimates are at this point. So, we're asking you to please vote on this amendment to tag to the fourteen-fifteen budget year.
Okay, question, Dr. Brown?
How do these estimates compare to last year?
I believe they're actually up a little bit. And Ms. Ferris is here, she could answer. Is that, they're up? They are up a little bit, sir. Not tremendously to make a major difference in our lives, but they are up a little bit.
Okay, Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Anderson, is the reporting different from last year?
The reporting, what you see on these documents, this is exactly the way it's been done. The difference is, is the timing on when these things are done now. We still had to submit them last year at the same time. But we give you, in the spring, when we vote on this in April, we really don't have a good feel for them. So, we just say, here's what it is of this current year and what we think it will be. This will better get us aligned with, so you'll know better where we are when we start the fiscal year in July. So, really, I think it's almost kind of an enhancement to make sure that the Board's more aware of where, what the numbers will be at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Other questions? Dr. Brown?
I'll make just a general comment. I continue to be frustrated when we're required to vote on things that we don't have the accurate information because one government agency wants it and another government agency hasn't provided it. So, I just think that's somewhat ridiculous. But I understand the position that you're in, so.
Sir, thank you.
Ms. Wright is here. I didn't know whether you had a question about her or whether if you, is there any enlightenment you can give us on this?
Mr. Anderson, the bag is locked.
Okay. Oh, mercy.
Checks in the mail.
All right, Gary, would you take, just for me and maybe other Board members as well? Okay, I'm looking at the page Budget Overview, seven-fifty-one, Title I-A.
Okay, Title I-A, at, Title, federal budgets are separated into different titles and different sections. Title I-A is mostly our teachers that we have. And we have a lot, obviously, to pay for their benefits in that as well. We also have a lot of money for instructional supplies and materials, which is on your second page. That is for the spiral. The spiral is based on free and reduced population at the school as to how the funding levels have to be established. So, the materials and supplies on page two.
I'm sorry. I don't know, I don't know where you are.
See, your pages, Ms. Anderson, are labeled differently than ours.
Okay, on the overview, what you have here are the federal funds. So, you're going to have your IDEA, which is your special ed funds. You're going to have, I mean, you're also going to have here your Title Funds. Your Title Funds are based on free and reduced. So, they are to support the schools that have higher free and reduced. And it has to be above and beyond what the school district would be giving. So, for example, and Title Funds really are driven from the school. So, last year, we had a request, for example, for two schools to go together and to be able to use their Title Funds for a math coach. We have another school that several years ago decided that they wanted to have a STEM focus, so they actually have a STEM person. So, that's what you're going to see on here. These funds are to be spent above. Now, Gary, I'm going to let you explain the spiral or crystal, but it really is allocated. So, the decision on how, what percentage of the funds go to what specific schools are based on the free and reduced lunch proportions.
Okay, but where I am, I don't know where Mr. Anderson is.
Okay.
I'm looking at what I've got on the laptop.
Okay, page forty-seven?
Yes.
Is, on your laptop, is Title I-A. Okay? And the first category, one-sixteen, is a big number, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-plus. And that is for?
Teachers.
Teachers.
Okay, all right. I'm with you now.
Okay. The next big number, if you go to the very next page, page forty-eight, it shows a big amount for instructional supplies and materials, three-hundred, almost three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand. That is where the spiral really kicks in. And the spiral, as Dr. Gilbert pointed out, is based on what the schools request based on their percentage of free and reduced. They don't always have, they don't always ask for the same thing. It's up to the school to make that determination.
So, you have some that may be using it on materials? You have some that may be using it for after-school tutoring? It's really dependent upon the school's needs?
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, but when I see is four-twenty-nine instructional supplies and materials?
Yes, sir.
Mine says three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-nine-hundred, nine, three-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-nine-hundred dollars.
Same thing, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you gave another figure. Okay, okay, all right.
Okay. So, that's basically how the Title I is actually done. Now, each one of these different titles, we have on the next one, which is consolidated administration. The feds allow us to consolidate the, how we handle processing these for Title and for IDEA. So, we can put in there an amount of money that we can split amongst all of them and make it a consolidated amount. Instead of saying, ten dollars is going here, ten dollars is going there, it's put into a consolidated pool. And that's what that one is for. And that is what it costs us to operate and manage this program. Again, it's federal funds, it's not coming out of our local.
All right. I got you now, I'm on track.
Okay.
All right.
The next one, Title II-A, is?
What page is that?
I'm trying to find it.
Mine are not numbered, anyway.
My pages are not numbered.
Mine are not even.
It's in the document.
Fifty, right? It's the next page.
Page fifty, Title II-A.
Yes, see?
And?
What I've got's not numbered.
Mine is not.
I'm on a different document.
Seven-fifty-one, two thousand and fifteen, Consolidated Rev. Zero, Title II-A.
All right, on your, as you scroll down, it's page fifty of your total document.
Okay, I got that.
Okay, you're on the right page now.
Okay, on that one, that is for training. And so, we have some staff that do the training and in-service. And then, the rest of the big dollars are spent in in-service and staff development on that page. The next one is on page fifty-two, which is Title III, which is for ELL, our English Language Learners. And the money for that is basically for our interpreters and our liaison, for the Hispanic liaison that we have, and our interpreters. Next one, we go into?
Mr. Anderson, I'm so sorry. Each of these columns says the same thing, the same number, so.
Okay, well, one, the first column is what is the regular instruction program. The next column over is the grant, is the total for that line. In case I had multiple lines.
Okay, so there's nothing, it's?
It's just a total for the run across.
Okay.
It'll change on your next page. It'll change on your next page.
And why do we not, why do we have all these empty spots at the, like, on the top of each page? The blank?
These are printed off of the form that's into the computer that we filed that would, on the state computers. So, that's just, we just print it out and page it.
It's not because we don't know anything, it's just that that was just a prefab document, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
These are the actual forms. And so, there's no indirect cost there.
Thank you, thank you.
What you're seeing is state form.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, EL, we're now moving down to the special ed area, IDEA, Part B. The first column is for teachers, so two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars. So, you have the title of teachers. It comes to what is in the classroom. And the second column over, where it starts with fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two, that is the instructional support team. It's not the ones that are actually out in the classroom as far as teachers go. But that particular one is psychological personnel. And they funnel through seventy-two-two-twenty rather than seventy-one-two-hundred. So, it's just a difference in allocation of where it shows up in the state budget documents. But you can see there, that's for one psychologist, it pays for one secretary, et cetera. So, that's the IDEA Part B section. Okay? And the last one in this particular group is IDEA preschool, which is, starts on page fifty-six. And IDEA preschool only pays for one EA. That's all the federal money we get for that program for, out of IDEA.
On Part B, the other salaries and wages, two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy. It's not teachers, psychological personnel, secretaries, educational assistants, or speech pathologists, who?
That is for a deaf ed interpreter, Coda, and I'd have to have special ed help me with Coda, assessment specialist, and behavior specialist is what comes out of that line. And I think that's it. Okay.
May I ask my question?
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Anderson, bear with me. I may be in a time warp here. But I don't remember looking at this in this detail, perhaps.
No, and you really haven't seen this document in detail before?
Okay, this is what's confusing me.
And that is one of the things, I said, it's kind of like an enhancement to what, by doing it this way, you will then see all the expenditures. In the past, you've seen the revenues. And then, as special ed or as the schools decide what's needed, that's what would come back into this document. But you haven't really seen it broken out like this.
I haven't, I haven't. And all these years, and I was sitting there going, this feels new to me. And is this a new requirement by the state? Or is this just a way to help us understand more the, you know, things coming in, things going out, and the timing?
Well, the requirements, we have always done it. And the Board has approved us to spend the money up to the amounts that IDEA and Title has given us.
Right.
So, the difference is, we've done it all the time. Difference is, you're now seeing what the expenditures are based on what the Comptroller's Office is asking us to do. So, if the Board and the City Council are going to approve a budget, they need to know what the expenditures are, not just what the revenues are.
Okay.
So, that's why it's much more in detail for you.
One last follow-up question. Do we expect a change in the IDEA money for?
Mr. Marlin, do you expect any change in IDEA, the funding?
Uh, not really.
Okay. Usually the federal funding is pretty stable unless there's a, a new law that comes along, and they, um, last year, for example, when they were talking about the entitlement programs, we knew that that would hit us with the title for, the title programs, which is what we worried about, but that did not change. So usually your federal is pretty solid.
Okay, that's good news.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Renee?
Ms. Renee is trying to-
Oh, I'm trying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm still, I, I understand this is enhanced, but I'm still, still kind of confused by it because, and maybe Dr. Brown asked the question, and I just was in la-la land, but you've got your line, the 116 for the teachers, of two hundred, almost two hundred twenty thousand dollars. How many teachers does that incorporate?
That incorporates five teachers, two CDC teachers, one deaf ed teacher, and two resource teachers.
So that's five teachers?
Yes.
Okay, then the psychological personnel, that's one psychologist.
Yes. Now, we have many more psychologists in that in the district, that's just one that's paid through federal funds.
And so IDEA is paid by federal funds, and it's completely separate from the ones that we approved on the other pages of the budget.
Right.
That's why we're all confused.
Exactly. See, what you approved, we spent a lot of time on the general purpose budget because at the time we do the budget, we don't know this stuff yet. And so that's, that's why we have to approve it now, and then we're going to have to come back and amend it later for you.
And then the, even, even still, though, we've got the teacher column, we've got the psychological personnel, and then we come back with the other salaries and wages? What is that? But, did you ask that question?
No, it's other, it's other uses. The last, the third column over is other uses, is that what you're saying?
Third column? No, I was talking about 189.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, we have one OTR person, one deaf ed interpreter, one Coda person.
Okay, that's what you asked.
Yes, that's, right.
I remember hearing the answer.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'm sorry, because it just didn't make any sense.
No, this is new, we, I expected a lot of good questions on this.
I've got a simple question on, on this, the, the account numbers, are those account numbers that we generated for our internal purposes, or is that account number put out by the state?
Those account numbers-
So that other city boards would have the same?
The account numbers are state required numbers. We are given a book on that in every school system in the state. And how, reason they do that is so they can track how every school system is spending money, so they align it by certain code numbers.
An apples-to-apples comparison.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the preschool one was the one we just, uh, we just left, and preschool is, starts on page fifty-seven, and it, uh, wait a minute. I don't want, oh, gotta go higher, sorry about that. Uh, it starts on page fifty-six.
I'm sorry, could you just read the title of it, because some of our pages are not numbered for some reason.
Okay, uh, it is IDEA preschool.
Preschool, okay, thank you.
Okay, and all we get from this one is the equivalent of one EA in our preschool.
Sad.
So that's kind of a very, that's a really small number.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next ones are after-school programs. Um, I'm sorry, before the after-school, we have one more voluntary pre-K. This is the money, the state, the state money that we get, and it's equivalent to twelve teachers in the teacher line of 116, and twelve EAs in line 163. So that's how we're paying for our, remember, we had said in our budget, there's twelve funded by state money, and that's where this comes from. That's what pays for those particular classes.
Repeat that one more time, twelve teachers and how many EA?
Twelve.
Twelve and twelve.
Twelve and twelve.
Thank you.
And that, that is for our pre-K program.
By state funds.
Right.
Thank you.
The next one is the after-school program. It's, for those of you who can see, it's page fifty-nine. It's, it's titled Extended Learning Twenty-First Century CCLC Leaps Lottery for Education After-School Program. Okay, this one is even more strange than the other ones. And you have two documents that are exactly the same. The reason is, the state informed us that you could get up to six hundred and, I think it's sixty thousand dollars, up to six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So they told us, build your budget around six hundred and sixty. You may not get that much, but build a budget around it. And that is why you'll see we have a line called other salaries and wages of a very large number, because we do not know. Now, in our program, we have to have the personnel to run the programs and do these after-school programs, so we put it there. Now, I, I don't know, Ms. Ferris can tell us maybe how much we received from that last year, I don't remember that number on the, on the program, but they told us to build it to this number, and, just because that's how much we could get, and if we didn't put it in there, we may not ever get it. So it's one of those type things. But again, that's for after-school.
I agree with Dr. Brown.
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry, I just, I need to understand this document, and actually, my question is back on, um, page fifty-seven, where we were just at. This is the state funding for these, with the, the positions that the state has funded, that's correct, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, when we look at the twelve, um, teachers, there, we pay more than the state allotts per teacher. So when we say that twelve, is the state funding the entire position, or just what the state allows for that position?
Uh, in this case, we're very close to paying for our total amount.
Okay. Where would the rest of it be? If it's not, if it's not covering quite the whole thing?
Well, when I, I actually asked the lady who does this today about that, that question, and she says is right at it this year, so we're not going to have to go into, into our general purpose funds, is what she feels. Again, estimates at this point, um, but she feels pretty good that we're, we're covered on this one, and we should be okay. If not, we would have to go into the line that, that we had for, uh, pre-K funding, but remember, we didn't build any money in for that.
Mm-hmm.
So if something happened on this, we'd have to come back for another budget amendment at that time.
Now, when, uh, when it talks about the position, is it just, um, does it include their benefits and insurance as well?
Yes, ma'am, and you can see on that particular line-
Down, down the line, yeah, yeah, okay.
Right. The two hundred numbers are all benefits.
Okay. That's, I was wondering, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then you have the, the, um, after-school program items, and then the last one that we have for you on this is the coordinated school health program. You've seen this one in your regular budget, we get a hundred thousand dollars from the state, and this is showing how that money will be spent. You've already, you've already seen this one, but it was in that grouping, so we wanted you to approve this one as well, since it was in that federal and state grouping.
What page are you on?
Uh, page sixty-three.
Okay.
It's, uh, and all this pays for is salaries and benefits for those two employees in that department. That's it. Okay, those are all the budget amendments for the fourteen, fifteen year. I'm sorry for the way they come across, that's, that's why we make budget amendments during the year.
Do you need a, um-
Yes, we-
We need a motion to approve these amendments?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Ms. Phillips? I'm sorry, Ms. Renee, excuse me.
Second.
Sorry, Mr. Barrett, thank you. Any other discussion?
I just want to take a moment and thank Mr. Anderson and his staff for their work on this. I'm sure that once we get used to looking at these documents, it'll be very helpful to us.
Thank you, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. All right, reports and information? We're looking at teacher list, item B.
Uh, we have, on the first one, we have for A, we have budget review, and I'm going to let Mr. Anderson carry that one.
Well, I thought that's what we just did.
Well, no. I think the board had asked for some discussion or some presentation about the budget process, because it was quite a process that you all went through, and so I've asked Gary to kind of talk, uh, about that tonight, so the public would understand.
Okay, yes, at, at the last meeting, you requested we come up and, and present to you about the budget. This was an extremely unique budget year, since I've been involved with schools for twenty-five years. Um, I'll, I'll go through the things that specifically affected, impacted our district, and things that not, you don't deal with every year. One was you're opening up a new school, Overall Creek, that presented an instant issue for us of having to come up with additional funds to pay for staffing that school. We converted Reeves Rogers to a traditional pre-K six school. We moved Discovery School to the Bellwood campus. We moved the pre-K out of Bellwood and placed them in various other schools around the district. We totally re-zoned the district on where students would be attending next year. We reconfigured Mitchell Nielsen as to one school with an upper grade and lower grade campus. We transferred personnel to various schools to cover the openings and reconfigurations of grade levels. We had fiscal challenges exacerbated by the fact that the state, uh, did not provide any additional funds for technology or for salaries. They reduced the BEP money, BEP is for Basic Education Program, that's the state's funding formula. They reduced the funds to us by two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars because they only gave us technology for one year, and that was a statewide issue that we had to face as we moved forward. Picking up the proportional expense share of the new technology was added into our budget this year, which is over four hundred thousand dollars more. We were struggling to keep our pupil-teacher ratios as low as possible. We added full-time assistant principals at all of our schools rather than just half-time at some of the smaller schools. We increased in the need for additional special ed positions due to the growth of our special ed population that's come into the district, and we worked to keep our teacher step chart intact without any additional funds to do so. So that presented a plethora of problems for us to, to work through. Here's the approaches we took that you had the challenge of, of deciding of what to do with that. We reduced our EA ratio, our educational assistant ratio, from seventy-five to one to eighty to one. It was a small one, but it, it did generate some dollars to offset some of the challenges we had. We changed the board's health insurance program to continue to fully pay for individual insurance for all full-time employees. So we were able to keep that intact just by adjusting the plan that we were using. It's the same state plan, it's just one of the options that the state gave us. We reduced the number of locally funded pre-K classes. As you know, we were funding extra classes on top of what I just showed you in the federal, I mean, I'm sorry, the state numbers. We eliminated some district-level support positions. We contracted out all of our custodial services to help reduce the budget deficit. We reduced travel expenditures for employees within the district and the mileage rate that we were providing for people who did travel, and we reduced the substitute teacher pay. Those were the approaches we used in dealing with this, and you had very tough decisions to make this year on how to make this whole budget fit. And we also used the fund balance that you've built up over the years that let us be able to do these things. So, and that's, that's where we were, that was how this budget came about. As I said, it was an extremely unique budget for this district to deal with, uh, and we've made it through, and now goes to city council for their approval Thursday night. So I didn't know if there's anything else you wanted to have discussed about the budget process?
Ms. Phillips?
Well, I was the one to ask to have it put on there, and thank you for that, that good review. I think that, what, what I wish is that, um, the public, I want them to know how hard each of my colleagues on the board worked to come up with a, a budget that would, uh, support our children, our teachers, and our families in as much, as the very best we could. We have an excellent education system, um, I was impressed by each of my colleagues. Ms. Renee was a, was a awesome advocate for the teachers, and if it weren't for Ms. Smith, we, our EAs wouldn't have had their step increases the way they, that they needed to, and, and Dr. Brown led us in carefully analyzing where we could make cuts, and, and each, each colleague on the board presented something, um, and I really did appreciate their input. I think it's important for the public to have some, um, understanding of how hard we work. One of my big concerns was making sure that we could develop over the course of time a budget that was sustainable, and, um, so we're, we're still working towards that end, and I just wanted to take that moment and, and share that with our, our folks at home.
Any other comments? Dr. Brown?
Uh, one of the things that I would like to see next year, and I know that you have a timeline for this, but if we could have just a little bit more time to review the budget and discuss it before we need to pass it, uh, I know that's difficult, but, uh, the more time we've got to look at it, the better decisions that we can make, so.
Yes, sir.
Good. Ms. Barrett?
And I've asked this before, too, um, some projections into the future, you know, for our upcoming years. I know it's hard sometimes with tax revenue and property taxes like we just went through, but if we could have that, I think that would also help us with our decision-making, just kind of projecting into the future, like, even two years, I think that would help us.
Ms. Anderson?
I was hoping after we got through all the moves and getting the school started to be able to produce that for you.
Okay.
I was really concerned with all the stuff we had going on, that I wouldn't be able to get it as accurate as I could.
Okay, no, we had a lot going on, I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Still do.
Still have a lot to do.
I, I really do want to see what you're talking about, a projection in the future, but also I want to thank you for, y'all worked really hard to put together your proposed budget, and we went through it line by line about multiple, multiple times. What could we have done better in order to have gained greater funding?
I, I'd like to comment on that. I, I want to commend the board, because I think the public needs to understand that even the week that we were taking the budget to you, we were getting changes, and we were not sure exactly what the funding would be from the state. An example, a good example of that would be, for example, the governor's proposal that he was going to have a two percent raise that did not come through for teachers. So I think that, as, as far as the board, and, and also I'd like to commend the principals, because we started working on this January, February, maybe, and each principal came in with, with what they thought they needed, and they understood clearly what, what we were facing. Each department head came in before we even presented it to you all. And then, this board, I really appreciate the fact that you all do take it, you take it line item by line, and you want to understand everything that's in that, and I think it's so important. So I think as, as, and I'll let him answer what we could have done differently, but I think a lot of this really depended on what the timing from the state and what we knew as far as the money we'd be getting, because you're, it's really hard to go in blind into something and try to decide what funds do you have, plus, looking at projecting ahead to the students, and you mentioned the special education students, knowing that that's a priority of ours, to get those numbers down so that we can be more effective with our students, and trying to guess at that. So there's so much of that, that you go into it not knowing. And I think for you all to have taken the budget apart first, for Gary and, and the staff to be able to prepare it the way they did, and to take the time that we took going through it and that they took going through it, and for you all to have done it was really remarkable, I mean, just remarkable. But that's, you can answer that, but I think so much of that just depended on the timeline of what we were hearing from the state.
One of the, one of the complaints that all finance directors have in the state for school systems is that we have to do budgets before we know any information from the state on funding. So when we go into this, we are going into this blind, because we start back, before the end of the calendar year, starting getting information in from the principals on stuff, we are really heading into it blind. We don't know tax rates, because we're, we're dependent on the county, on their tax rate to know what kind of revenue they have, so that's why we always have budget amendments coming out. I don't know if we could have done anything different in what we did, because we're kind of saddled with the process that the state has put us into. I don't really know of anything different we could do. It's done the same way in other districts, so I really don't know.
Mr. Washington?
Yeah, I don't say much, but I'm just listening. In, in our opinion, and we need those projections, it's the same, Dr., you're talking about, about the future for, for us, we'd love to see it, because I'm taking this into account tomorrow night, but really, to do a really good long-range, a short-term or a long-range thing, you really need a good solid year of operations. And right now, you don't have it, because you've got Overall Creek coming on, online, so when you get a good solid year of operations, you've got the zone already done, then he can do better with projections about what can happen, so what I guess I'm trying to tell you is, don't ask him to do something in two or three months. I advise you to give him, give you all a good year of good solid operations, being jumping, because it's not-
Well, what has been said, I think, is, is correct. We, and we did, we met several times, and we haven't always done that, but I think everybody was willing to and wanted to, and, uh, we went through it pretty well with what was presented to us. Ms. Phillips?
Just a closing for me comment is that, um, yeah, I, I understand, that's, that, I agree with, um, the comment about, um, in as much as possible, we do need as much time as possible to review, and until you've done, gone through the process, you don't realize how long and arduous it can be going line through by line, because we're talking about people and children and classrooms and jobs and, you know, people's future, so it is, we have to be very, very careful and thoughtful about the whole process, and, um, I understand, uh, that's, that's something that Mr. Barrett has been mentioning for a while, is, um, having some kind of, um, projection, if possible, a financial projection, and I hear what you're saying about, uh, giving us a good year of operation where we're not opening a new school, so we have a sense of what our norm, what our norm would be, what the norm would be. And I wanted to also thank Mr. Campbell for all the good fabulous questions and, and thought, um, thoughtful questions. questions. He contributed to our budget discussions throughout the process, too.
Any other comments pertaining to the budget review? All right.
All right, you have before you the 2014-15 teacher location list. These are the lists that we have them now. They may change depending upon numbers. We have principals that are, they're calling us, that are wondering, are those numbers going to hold, and we're not sure. But you do have before you the list of each school and where the folks are assigned for the coming year. If you have specific personnel problems, I'll be happy to answer those if you'll give me a call, but those are the lists. You'll notice that we do have, with those, we do have, of course, special areas and all of them, the support staff that are there, and then the grade levels that are there also. We did just recently move two of the pre-Ks from Reeves to, that are the regular pre-Ks to Northfield because of the numbers there. We were going to have to use some portables at Reeves Rogers and did not want to do that. So, we have moved those to Northfield, and they are in the process now of moving the materials over there. So, those are the lists that you have in front of you.
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry that the teachers at Reeves Rogers, you know, they were all ready to work at Reeves Rogers, but thank you for not having our children in portables.
Well...
That really, I went over there, and they're working so hard to make it into an awesome new school, and then when I saw portables, I just, that's just not right.
The cottages at St. Andrews are being moved. I know that one of them, I drove by there Sunday. Are they both gone now, or just one of them? Okay, so, okay, so I was glad to see that.
Wonderful.
That was a good thing. Lori had actually, Ms. Offit had called me, she had a projection of another classroom, at least one more classroom. We debated the possibilities, we had talked about, she had talked about putting fifth grade out there. We looked at it, and we realized that we had pre-K teachers that already, they had not moved it, we had moved their materials there, and after looking at that, we just decided to go ahead and make the shift. So, I appreciate Dr. Lloyd accepting those pre-K classes, which will be, really be a good thing, because we have some special needs classrooms there that, and they can interact with typically developing peers now, so that'll be a good thing.
All right, any questions on the teacher list? All right, construction update?
Okay, it's in your board packet on page, it starts on page seventy-seven. It's quite an extensive list, because we've been doing a lot of things this summer, but the Hobgood New Administration and Food Service Area Project is done, except we are getting additional parking spaces on the Jupiter Loop that's on the backside, because we don't have enough parking out there from we have all the student teachers coming over to help from MTSU. And that was, we were able to do that as part of the scope of the project under parking, so there's no additional expenditure to anybody on that that's covered. Overall Creek, there's pictures in here, some beautiful aerial shots, color aerial shots of the building. The move-in date for furniture is July fifteenth. They're really pushing it to get it done by July thirty-first, so we can move teachers in. We have to have the certificate of occupancy to be able to do that, but they're pushing hard to get it done. If you go by the school now, you can see that the pavers are all out front, and they're really moving along on that school, so it's looking good, and we hope they can finish up quicker than what they say. Central office roof was, did you have a question on that one?
Can we go over and visit now, or do we need to have Ms. Trail schedule a visit for a group of us again?
It's always best when you go on a construction site to let them know ahead of time, because of the workers there and the hard hats, and have someone go with you. It's always best to do that, so Ms. Trail can arrange that for you. The central office roof, the, what's called the cow wall, which is the skylight over the main entrance area, has now been replaced with a standing metal seam roof, because we kept having leakage there, and they're finishing up on that. The foundation repair at Reeves Rogers, there's two pages in your book of black and white pictures. They really, they were colored when we sent them, they ended up being black and white, but they're showing, it's best to go look at it, it looks beautiful, you can't tell any work was done there. They've done really well on that foundation, and they're finished up on that project by the end of this month. Exterior doors in MNE and MNP, doors are in shipment for that, and as we've said earlier, our maintenance department will be doing the installation on those instead of contracting that out to save money. The playground rubber resurfaced at Erma Segal, we have contracted that, and the work is estimated to begin on July twenty-first. Obviously, this is their busy time of the year, and they said it will be done before school starts, so we're excited about that. Maintenance Department major projects, the Bellwood Electricity Transformer, it is in place now. The final hookup to the school, the electric company ran into the transformer, the final hookup to the school will be made Monday, and so there's no power to the school on Monday at all, so no work will be done in there on Monday, but everything will be hooked up on Monday now. We got that official date from them. Bellwood parking lot striping, we had to wait till they had all their heavy equipment out of there and created all the mud, and we are actually going to be starting that later this week and early next week. What we're doing is seal coating it with black, the tar material that does seal coat on the asphalt, and then we're repainting the lines in there, because no longer is it a school where the kids get dropped off and the parents, I mean, where the parents have to come in the school to drop the kids off. Now, it is a drop-off and pick-up school, so we had to totally reconfigure that parking lot, and that will be done here in the next few weeks. But we had to make sure that all the heavy equipment was out of there before we did that. We had the redrawn and approved by the city codes department to make sure it worked, and we now have a staging area for cars to come in off the main road, so we're excited about that happening there. Bellwood painting project, we are about done. They're doing touch-up in classrooms, they're totally repainting the dining room, and did some good things in there to make it look really nice. It was dated because of the colors and just the way it was configured, and we're redoing that, so it looks really good. Reeves Rogers, basically, we went and did the same thing at Reeves Rogers that we did at Bellwood to upgrade that, and we went in and did a real unique thing. I don't know if you've ever seen at that school, the design had the cafeteria tables into the walls. Well, if you ever get a chance to go by there and see what we've done on that, we've removed those, because, one, they were a safety hazard, two, they didn't work, three, they would just trap stuff, dirt and stuff. We got rid of those, and they are now bookshelves and display cases for the kids. So, that is, that's a big improvement to that area. We have a new front awning there, and we have a new logo, if you've seen on the website, the new logo for what the school's mascot is, the Mustangs. Mitchell Nielsen, halls and trim to be painted before school starts, we're waiting on the color selection.
That's on its way, thank you. I got in touch with her today.
Okay. Bradley Gym floor, we repainted and refinished that floor. We had a little bit of cupping or warping on the gym wood floor, we've sanded that down, we've resurfaced it, so we had to obviously come back and repaint it, so that one's done. Hobgood roof replacement, you voted on that last time, to have the old section done, so they'll be getting that done before school starts back. And I just put at the bottom, I don't think I need to read all the move updates, where I've listed all the move things that we've done this summer. The major moves are over with, there's now little things, little bits and pieces that may have been left behind, or things to be moved within schools, but our movers are officially done as far as major projects, and we're now moving into the second phase of the smaller things being moved around and detailed out. So, I don't know if anyone had any questions on that. We have been extremely busy in the district. We have been, on our painting and moving projects, we've been able to keep our bus drivers and bus assistance employed during the summer to help us with all those moves, so we didn't have to contract that out. So, we were able to keep it in-house, which obviously saved us money, but also provided employment for our employees that would have been laid off over the summer. So, we felt good about being able to do that. Logistically, I want to thank the maintenance department, Mr. Wilford and Christopher for making this happen so smoothly. So, we thank you for your support in letting us make all this happen.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I want to thank all the maintenance people and everybody that's been working so hard to make every school look great. I have heard from a number of teachers about the, how impressed they have been with the care that all of their teacher supplies have been taken care of, and they're all been moved from one school to another, and they're in great condition, which is not easy to do. So, please let them know that we appreciate all their hard work.
I will, thank you. It was a logistic nightmare, but a dream come true for someone who loves logistics.
Where's Brown, when you need him? Thank you. All right, anything else on that? All right, Ms. Anderson? Personnel, no, I guess it's...
You have your personnel update, your monthly revenue and expenditure report, your attendance interview report, I'm going to let Gary handle that unless you have a specific question about personnel, and then I'll call up Mr. Ringstaff, but I'll let you just finish it.
Okay. You have two-month reports on your financials, since we didn't have a meeting, a regular scheduled meeting last time. I can go through both, or I can skip to the most recent one, whichever is your pleasure. Mr. Chairman?
Most recent, I think.
Okay, the most recent one is the one that ended through May thirty-first. The net income for the period is one million seven hundred and thirteen thousand. Last year at this time, we were one million six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so we're slightly ahead of where we were last year at this time, which is really good news. We're at the ninety-two percentile of the year. You took care of all the budget amendments to handle anything that was over the budget that we needed to fix. The revenues that we looked at, we're ahead of schedule on collection of property taxes and sales taxes, and that's why you saw those amendments tonight. We seem to be, after the amendments were done, we seem to be fine for finishing up the year, we're close to where we thought we would be. So, that was good news on that front. Anyone have any questions on the financial piece? Thank you for all the amendments that made it flow very nicely. The next piece is the attendance and enrollment for the year-end.
We've done personnel.
And I understand this came through black and white. I'm sorry, I have it in color. I don't know if we made any extra copies, but I can go over it with you, tell you the numbers. We ended the year with a total student population of seven thousand two hundred and one, not counting the pre-K students. We ended up forty students more than the ninth month of last year. So, we were up forty students from end of year to end of year. The attendance percentage was at ninety-seven percent. That is just, I keep talking about that, that is wonderful, we had that attendance. Our pupil teacher ratio was nineteen point two-one for K through three, and nineteen point eight-nine for four through six, for an average of nineteen point four-five. At the very bottom across where you have grade levels, you can see our trend is still that the younger grades, kindergarten, first second, are higher numbers than the upper grades. That shows a growing district when your lower grades are higher. Then our higher grades, it shows that the district continues to grow, and it seems to grow more each year. When you look at kindergarten, your biggest class, first grade your next biggest, second grade your next biggest, and it goes down like that. So, that's a good sign for us. So, we ended the year very well. We're very anxious to see what happens as we get ready to open up that new school, that new brick and mortar, and reopening Reeves Rogers as a traditional school. So, if anyone have any questions about where we ended up on that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Other business? I'm sorry, is it from there?
I think we kind of slid past personnel, the list there. Can we go there for a second?
Sure.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
I noticed on that list that there are, let me go back to it, as I said, for some reason, on my documents, they're not numbered. But, here we go. Under certified resignations and terminations, as I recall, when we talked, I think I specifically asked about such business not so long ago, and the number that I think we heard was maybe three or four people, and at the retirement dinner, I believe that number was, what, twelve? How many people retired? Twelve, fourteen?
At that time, we only had a couple of teachers that had retired. Since then, we've added two more teachers that have retired.
Okay.
One of the teachers had retired earlier, if you want to pull it, you want.
Okay, so, that number is not included here, but there's a list of twenty-one names, and I'm just going to make a comment. I know how...
Twenty-one names of what?
Under certified resignations and terminations.
Okay.
And I see the certified retirements above that with Ms. Gerald Lassiter, McFarland, and Jenna Summer, and wonderful people, all of them. On the other list, I know that, bless their hearts and souls, every one of our teachers works desperately hard each and every day, every night, and every weekend. And I know how difficult things are for teachers right now, statewide, nationwide, all the demands that are put on them by us as school districts, by the state, by the federal government. I just want these twenty-one people to know that we appreciate them. I don't know why they're leaving us, but they will be missed. All I have to say.
Mr. Ringstaff, you're standing, you have anything to add, or are you just waiting?
No, ma'am, I thought there was going to be a question.
Okay.
And I have something about the other business.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
Yes, I recently discovered, which I did not know before, that some of these people who are listed under certified resignations are, left our system because of zoning. The schools with the change in zoning, some, at least one of our schools lost personnel. And I hadn't, I did not know that before. So, I did not realize that because of zoning, any of our schools would lose personnel. So, I'd just like to hear a little more about that.
I'll be happy to talk with you if you'll call me about that. I'd rather not get into personnel issues publicly.
Okay. I'm just curious, how many were lost?
Do you know how many teachers we reduced?
We had three hundred sixty-one teachers for this past school year. We're projected to have three hundred fifty-two the next school year, classroom teachers.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the difference.
Nine.
Nine, okay, nine, okay. Thank you.
Now, if you go through, and I did, all the faculties for next year, and took those teachers that were leaving, that left one school wherever they went, we had a total of roughly seventy-six teachers who were moved or went from one school to another. Thirty-six of those went to Overall Creek, and the majority of those came from Scales, but some came from some other places. So, when you look at the number of teachers we have, and some that retired, resigned, or whatever the case may be, I don't think that it was as massive and as major of an undertaking as I thought it was going to, as I thought it was early on, by looking at those. So, whatever. But, you've got a good question, and you can go, Dr. Gilbert, and get some answers, I guess. All right, anything else in regards to the personnel update?
I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell, I'm confused. We had three hundred sixty-one teachers, and now we have three fifty-two?
Classroom teachers, that's projections.
And why are we reducing?
Part of it is, part of it is because when you look at how the zoning and the numbers fall out, then you're going to have some, for example, there's some situations I can think of where we had two classroom teachers or three classroom teachers to a grade level. The way the numbers are going to fall out, those numbers are going to shift, and so when you look, it's really looking at the district and seeing where the placements of students will be and what we think we're going to need as teachers. At least that's my, but you may be seeing something different.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just surprising to me. I mean, I understand what you're talking about, reconfiguring, but it is surprising to me considering that we're a growing district.
Are those pre-K teachers included in there, too?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the personnel update? Thank you, sir. All right, other business?
Mr. Chair, I have one item under other business.
Okay.
I've put at your place, contract...
I've put it your debt place, contract for Tuition Express. I apologize for the lateness of this. Our city attorneys were working on our behalf to get the language of the contract that best suit our needs, and we did not get a response from the company until today. In order to implement this at the beginning of the school year, we will need your approval tonight. Tuition Express, this is all about ESP, our after-school care program. And I've given the highlights on the first page. Our current system only allows for parents to pay by check, or credit, or debit card. It does allow for credit and debit cards to be on file and automatic payment be taken from those accounts. The parents can sign a contract which states how much and how often we can pay, take payments from those cards. Tuition Express allows for more of a secured encryption of the cards, better security. Tuition Express will also allow parents more options to pay on their accounts, such as parents can pay online, they can pay at night, at 10 o'clock at night, they can get online and pay. Parents can pay on-site at the school. They can walk in, swipe the card themselves, and pay that way. We will have a system set up at each site. Parents can allow auto-draft from checking or savings accounts, like most people do. Have your car payment, house payment automatically deducted from your checking or savings account. Payments taken using Tuition Express, it's the same software that we currently use for ESP called ProCare10, and that enables us to apply directly to the parents' accounts, thus cutting room for error. There's no additional cost to the parents. ESP has absorbed these processing costs of this feature for a number of years. If we go to Tuition Express, ESP could save up to $800 a month, which is roughly around $10,000 a year. This change will add convenience for the parents to pay for the childcare costs while enabling ESP to be more efficient in collection of payments, reduce the possibility of error, and save money. And I would ask for your approval of this agreement with Tuition Express, so we can implement this at the beginning of the school year.
All right, any questions? Ms. Phillips?
My question's for Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker, my understanding of our policy was that topics could be introduced but not discussed when it's entered at other business.
This is an example of an item that we need to get board approval now before the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
Because you won't be meeting in July. It's very important we get approval for this contract, so we can go in and get the system in place before the school year starts. So, this is one of those rare examples where we definitely need to bring it under other business and get action taken on it tonight.
I just wanted to make sure we're not breaking policy.
And you've looked at this, Kelly, right?
Yes, Adam Tucker in my office has reviewed this and been in negotiations with their attorney to make the amendments that you find under Addendum A to their pro forma contract that they had originally sent us. And so, we've approved it as to form.
Dr. Brown?
I know there are fees associated with this, and it looks like on the fourth page, there's some fees discussed. Could you explain to us how this company will make their money, what those fees are, and who will act? I'm assuming that from what you're saying, ESP will pay those fees, but-
Yes, sir.
It all eventually goes back to the parents, so.
No, sir. If they write us a check for each week, right now it's $90 a week for summer care. During the school year, it's $45 a week. They can write those checks, and that, only that amount will be applied. Those payments-
Yeah, but if we didn't have fees, then the amount that they pay could be lowered by some amount. Go ahead.
Well, right now, ESP currently pays $3,300 a month for processing fees. These could be reduced to about $2,500 a month.
Say that again?
Currently, ESP pays $3,300 a month for processing fees for our current system. If we switch to Tuition Express, we estimate about $2,500 a month that would cost ESP, a savings of $800 a month.
Ms. Rineer?
What, refresh my memory, what system do we use for lunch payments during the day?
Sandy, what system do we use for lunch payments?
I mean, but we're going to go to everybody gets lunch, so we won't have to worry about that anymore.
But this would be similar to what you use right, in, right now with nutrition. Is that right?
It's called parent online. It's supported through their nutrition program, which is-
Well, I was just wondering if it was something that could be combined and get a better cost or something. But, we'll be going to nothing during the day, correct? What happens if a parent chooses not to give you their debit or credit or checking account number?
They can pay by check.
Is that an option?
They can pay by check every week.
They can still do that.
Are there other companies other than Tuition Express that do this?
I'm sure there are, but this coincides, this communicates with our current software program that ESP uses, which will eliminate the, which would reduce the possibility of error, because they can go directly into the parent's account.
But this is not an item that had to be bid on by other companies?
Now, due to the fact that we needed something that was interactive with the current software program that we utilize for ESP, and this program interacts specifically with our current software program, so that's one reason we could go directly with this company.
But there are not other programs that interact with what we have, as far as you know?
As far as I know, I was not made aware of that.
Okay, all right. We have other questions?
This seems to be taking more of a credit card, but if you said if people pay with a check, do we just run the check through our bank? And I mean, I guess there's no fees with that account, is there?
Correct.
I noticed also there's a $65 charge for a card reader. Do we already have those on-site?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm assuming we're going to pay $65 for each school?
Yes, sir.
Is that a one-time fee, or is that?
I'm not sure.
Assume the merchant application fee is a one-time charge, but that's a good question.
All right, explain that $65.
Plus the $195.
$195, under scheduled fees, left says merchant application fee, $195. I would assume it's a one-time fee.
It is.
And then each digital location, I'm assuming the location is a school.
Right.
And it's $18.50 per month, per location.
So, now we're up to, what? And then if each school has a card reader, that's $65 bucks. I'm assuming the card readers, it says optional. Do we have card readers on location? I think we did way back when.
We do.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, we can do without that.
So, right now, what's it going to cost us per month, per school?
It's estimated about $250 per month. Total. For 10 schools, or well, 12 schools, $200.
12 schools, $200 apiece?
Yes, sir. $2,400.
Okay. So, we're looking at $2,400 a month. And right now, ESP is paying $3,300?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying? So, it's going to save ESP about $900 a month?
Eight to $900 a month, yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Rineer?
What is the paper statement fee? Does every parent get a statement each month, or it just isn't explained very well?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Ms. Smith?
You look reluctant. What are our possibilities? If we, if, I mean, can you check to see? I mean, I know we have a time problem, but I don't want to vote yes if we have uncertainties. So, can you check to see if there are other systems that will work with our-
Oh, I know there are no other systems that work with Tuition.
You know there aren't. It's not an I don't think so. You know that there are not any.
I know that, yes. Because I wanted to check myself.
Okay. Well, good, I'm sorry, I thought that it was one of those.
No, ma'am.
We didn't know, okay.
I wanted to research this, and we looked into it. Tuition Express has an agreement with ProCare10.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
It sounds like you've done a lot of research. Was Pinnacle allowed to come back with the competitive price, or they did not even bother?
I don't know. Pinnacle did exactly what we asked them to do, but they don't, they cannot communicate with our current software program.
Okay.
And our current software program with Tuition Express can do us a whole lot more.
And save money?
Yes.
Okay.
As a board member, I'm a little bit reluctant to give approval this quick with the questions that I think members have that I'm not real sure we're all clear on. I may be wrong. Everybody else may be clear, and maybe I'm not, but it looks, unless I'm missing something somewhere, it looks to me like there's, there's a little bit more involved financially than what Mr. King was figuring out. I don't know, maybe I'm, Ms. Baker, you've been in on negotiations with this, correct?
Mr. Tucker's been handling the negotiations.
Okay, all right. Ms. Rineer?
It just appears that there may be more fees, and I'm not sure what this means under the fees of MasterCard Discover discount rates. It has rate 1.95% plus 33 cents per item. What does that mean?
What we're going to be allowed to do, our rates are going to go down if a family pays a month instead of a week, because that's going to be fewer transaction for that particular family. So, our rates will go down. That, when we can save more money, we're able to offer that option as well. The more-
You're, I'm sorry, can I stop you? You're able to offer a discount to the family?
We can do that as well.
I thought we set, we, didn't we set rates for ESP?
Well, we don't have to do it this, this year. We could offer it next year.
Well, what I'm getting at is I'm just not clear as to what these, there's eight rates listed here from 0.95% to 3.25% plus 33 cents per item. I don't know what that means. Then there's a charge-back fee of $25 each, a retrieval fee of $15 each, and it says all other applicable association fees will be passed through at the association's rate. So, then you've got these other fees listed on the right-hand side. I just, I hope the research has been done enough that you, the numbers that you're expecting are going to be pretty close to accurate. It just seems like there's a lot of stuff going on here.
I think Mr. Tucker, our city attorney, has done due diligence with this.
Yes, I've got the spreadsheet that he did, where he took all of the various amounts from each school and calculated what rate would be applicable for each school. And he showed for the, at our current processing levels, it would be a savings of at least $636.49, he showed. And then potential savings for processing of larger transactions using Tuition Express could range up to $1,212 in savings. He has a spreadsheet where he figured, because those percentages you see are based on the size of transactions, and he got that data from each of the schools and calculated out which percentages would be applicable for the various schools, and has a spreadsheet that he did to determine what the cost savings would be. So, he definitely has gone to great lengths to review this, and it is a cost savings.
So, the, when you say the size of the transaction, does that mean the amount of the transaction?
Yes, the amount of the transaction.
They're hoping for a one-time monthly payment, which would make it easier and more cost-effective for you.
Yes, ma'am.
My only concern is, in this economy, I don't, man, maybe you have those figures as to how many families actually do pay monthly right now?
Very few.
That's what I would think.
The lowest that Mr. Tucker has estimated, we would save $600 a month, which is $7,200 a year. I'm good with that, in which we will give more options of payments to their parents.
Dr. Brown?
What's the term of the contract, and what are the exit provisions?
I would think it's a 30-day notice. Most contracts are that way.
And is it a one-year term?
I mean, you'd think, it has to be that.
I think, I think some of the things, probably a couple of things to say. One is, whenever we get a contract, we turn it over to Kelly and to Adam to look at. So, I think I would feel a lot more, I think if Adam were here, I feel confidence in him that he's looked at it, because what I've found is, they are the ones that really go through the detail of the contract. So, I think I'm comfortable with this, because I know that Adam has done, done work on this, and I think he's the one that's compared it. I think the other, the other thing that's been pointed out here is, we do have a software, we do have to use that software. And if this is the software that we need to use with that, I feel comfortable with that being the software that we need to use. I don't pretend to be an expert on contracts, but I know that Adam is, and so, I would trust his judgment on this. And I feel like he has done due diligence, or he never would have sent it back, because I know usually the timelines that we have is for that due diligence.
And the term of the agreement is, it's a three-year initial term, and there is 30 days' notice for termination. And I was looking to see, it's a 30-day notice for termination.
I'm just not clear on what a retrieval fee is and a charge-back fee, and who gets charged for that.
Would that be almost like a return check fee? Well, if Tuition Express is hitting a credit card, and let's say the credit card declines, they would, would they charge us the $25?
Is that, what does that mean, Mr. Ringstaff?
Well, in the next month or so, you're going to get another, I hope another agreement comes before you that will call a check exchange, which will help us get, retrieve insufficient funds from an individual. We currently have that system in place, but they're going out of business. So, we're going to bring to you another agreement.
Okay, so, just so I understand, for example, someone, their card's no good, what's this, who pays the retrieval, okay, but they manage, this company manages to find, get the money somehow from the family, and, and they charge you $15, is that it? Or charge our school system $15? Is that what you're saying?
Ms. Phillips, I could say something, but I wouldn't be 100% sure, so I would, I would rather not answer that.
And the charge-back fee, you feel the same way about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Dr. Brown?
Well, I understand Mr. Ringstaff's position, because if you just received this today-
Yes, sir.
We are hitting you with a lot of questions that you haven't had time to research. The last page of this document does say that the exit clause is 180 days, not 30 days, so is that in the Addendum A?
And which page are you looking at?
The last page of what's stapled together, the very short page.
There is a much more detailed terms and conditions that go with that agreement than just those, those pages. And these terms and conditions contain more of the detail that set out the actual, there's a- a termination section that's very detailed, that also has thirty-day notice for various different reasons, basis to terminate the contract. There's about, let's see, there's at least four or five different methods for terminating the contract.
Other questions?
Well, I was looking at their website, and they do seem to be fairly customer-friendly for both us, the user, and for the parent, because they can offer reports for us and for the parents, detailed online reports, email, that type thing. Says the average point-of-sale rate's one point five percent, other processors is two point oh-two, so...
Any other question? Mr. Barrett?
I was gonna make a motion, but if we have any more questions. Since the staff attorneys have reviewed it, and Wolf came with us tonight, I make a motion, we approve it.
All right, motion made by Mr. Barrett to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. King. Any other discussion? Do we have a roll call vote, please, ma'am?
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Hi.
Sheriff Campbell?
I'm.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
No.
Ms. Renier?
Aye.
Ms. Snell?
Aye.
Motion through. I don't know whether what I'm getting ready to say is appropriate or not, Kelly, but I'm gonna ask the question. Is there a possibility, because we do have a retreat in six days, is there a possibility that we can get some of the questions that we have asked tonight before the vote, get those on the agenda for the retreat, just to get from you, and, and get some answers to those questions?
If, have you run the ad yet?
Yes.
We just need to amend the ad, or I can just send you a letter answering those questions directly, rather than discussing them at the retreat.
That's about it?
And if you have any specific questions, you feel free to call Mr. Tucker, and he'll be glad to answer any individual questions. But I can get a, a letter drafted that answers your questions, and provide that to you, rather than putting it on the retreat agenda and needing to re-advertise.
All right.
And I would appreciate you all doing that, because I think it's important for you to be, feel comfortable, and I think when you get into a lot of legalese, you need some help with that sometimes.
All right, anything else to come before this board tonight?
Let me ask this, you were discussing the, the meeting with Rutherford County and Murfreesboro City. Would you like for Melanie to call Rutherford County and, and talk with them about that, or do you wanna wait and discuss that more at the retreat, or to see if there's, I didn't know if you wanted us to do any kind of prep work on that, or do you...
I, I don't have a problem with that. I know we, we discussed bidding with them again in January, and they were not real susceptible to that meeting.
Well, that's what I wondered, if we just needed to find out if they would even be interested in it before.
And I don't know. Ms. Renier?
I, I would rather we wait until the retreat and discuss it a little bit more, because part of this came from the workshop that we had gone to, and, you know, and then we would have a feel for what kinds of things, whether or not we wanted it to be with legislators or just a joint meeting.
Good. Mr. Barrett?
I didn't see that joint meeting on our, I got a copy of the agenda for our special call meeting coming up. I didn't see it on there. Did, did we get a new one, a new agenda?
You mean for the retreat?
For the retreat, yeah.
Oh, it...
I didn't see it, I saw TSB Legislative Conference and TSB Annual Convention, but I didn't see anything about a joint, Rutherford County, it's on there, where?
Well, I thought it was on the one I had.
Well, we were gonna, we were gonna discuss it under the conference.
I think a lot of things would be covered under the conference.
Okay.
Anything else to come before this board? Do I have a motion for us to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Mr. Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Get up and leave. Mr. King, they're in the fifth inning right now, Vanderbilt's up seven-zero.
Are they really?
No, I don't know, I'm just kidding.
I was gonna say, the starting first...
Vanderbilt's one-nothing.
Peanut gallery's a one-nothing.
The starting first baseman for Vanderbilt is an Oakland High School graduate, you know, Xander Will. His parents are Connie and Randy Will. Coach Will's son. But I, I think he's the only Murfreesboro kid on the team. There's a handful of middle Tennesseans, but a local, one of, you know...
Local boy makes good.
Yeah, we can get out of that.
We've got some of those that are made good.
Yeah.